I'll go ahead and call to meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward provides for the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. The participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by him any appropriate response should be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Beck, Air, Camper.
Here.
Coleman, Air, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks. Present.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of October 1, 2019.
Will be approved.
Aye.
The motion and second during discussion. Seeing not be registered to your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Under the consent of Jim, agenda, we have items one through five for your consideration.
Agreed.
Thank you. The motion and second during discussion. Seeing not be registered to your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Our first item. Item number one under public hearings is a 7:00 PM public hearing, consideration of a special use permit for 2535 McKelvey Road, Unit 10, to operate a kennel facility. Greg, do you want to take this?
Yes. We have before you a special use permit that was heard before planning and zoning last night. The operator is with us, Mr. Dinsloggi. At least the purchaser of the property and the applicant here. The applicant, the authorized applicant, is going to be the Alps Dog Retreat. I won't go through too much. It's all laid out for you in the application. There's maps in the packet for you as well. And Scott will be providing us materials that he also distributed last night at P&amp;Z. Essentially, what we have is a kennel in an AG district. As you remember, we did adjust some of the setback adjustments and fencing requirements for these in a previous ordinance about a month ago. The adjacent properties are also rural residential. One of the main items that came before us, this was considered or prepared to be considered about a month ago, when it was discovered that there was a covenant over basically the northeast quarter of the quarter section. And that kind of was discovered at the last minute in this process. Scott will walk you through the history of all that. That was probably the big one. This item for your consideration was approved unanimously last night at P&amp;Z on a conditional use permit. The conditions, and Scott will talk about that, are that Scott remains the owner of the property and the operators remain the same. A limit of 20 kennel facilities at this time. And that the, as he'll explain, you'll hear this, that the issues in relation to the covenants that are held on the property right now are resolved. After that, I'll let Scott take the rest of it for you.
Welcome, Scott.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my name's Scott Dinsloggi. I'm the owner of the Alps Dog Retreats in Garland. Yeah, tonight, I am seeking your approval for my special use permits for, well, basically to build a 20 kennel dog boarding facility one mile east of Seward on Highway 34 at 2535 McKelvey Road. So you all got an informational package. I'm gonna let you decide if I should walk you through that. Last night, I kind of paged through a committee committee and just kind of described everything to them. There's visuals in here, also addresses some issues that neighbors have had. So, or maybe just want to ask you questions.
Scott, why don't you address the neighbor issue, which you've worked through with them for the council?
Yeah, so I just sat down with all neighbors in our living rooms, and I have basically given them this package and told them what I plan to do, and basically that I want their approval in doing it. Currently, I have verbal support from all neighbors. We do have an amendment to the protective covenant that is on this quarter section of the quarter section. We've got the, we've got a final draft, but we're still, but we're still working on it right now. We just haven't, I don't know, kind of done fast enough before tonight, so we're gonna continue working on that. There has been issues that the neighbors have brought up. Barking is one of them, I can address that later. Also, they've limited me to 20 kennels, which is fine. That kind of fits the house's niche. Do I mine in Garland is so popular is because of how small it is. So, we're gonna continue with that niche, hopefully with this relocation. And so I'm fine with the restriction of 20 kennels and no more in the future. That's gonna be fine with me.
Any questions or comments? From the council? It is a public hearing, so if you don't mind opening up to the public to have any public comment on, on this item. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Please welcome. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Denny Karp, and I have property at 2535 McKelvey Road, Unit 10. And I've said this before, I'm not real comfortable talking to a group. I'm a lot better one-on-one behind a hydraulic chair, so bear with me. Thus, I have my cheat sheet here. But I feel strongly I'm gonna support this project that Scott's taking on, mainly because I think it will really be a much-needed addition to Seward County, a business that people, it's something that people are wanting. And it's, it's just worth supporting. I think it'd be good for Seward County. My property is a perfect location for this, and I know it because we've had hunting dogs the 23 years we've been there. And we've had cows mooing, peacocks running, everything you can imagine. And we had very little barking and no complaints from our neighbors about the dogs ever because they're happy. They could run wherever they wanted to run, and, and it's just a perfect setting for it. It's close to Seward, yet it's the country. So, it's a perfect location. And Scott has worked very hard to make this location work for everybody involved. He's very diligently approached all of the neighbors and wants their input because, and I, I kind of maybe insist on that too because they're my neighbors. It's my neighborhood. I would never want to do anything that would disrupt their country life. And so I really, it was important to me, and I was glad he did it. And he had all kinds of information, and any curiosity that they may have should have been covered, you know, by all of it. And just really working with it to make it work for everybody. This facility is gonna look great. It's gonna be very appealing when you drive past it on the highway. And I just truly think it would be a great asset to Seward County. So, thanks for your time, and I hope you give this some real serious consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, welcome.
I'll try not to fall over. Larry Brower, 945 North Fifth Street. I'm here on, speaking on behalf of Mr. Dinsloggi. I am a longtime customer of his. I've got a dog. And to be honest with you, I consider his place right now the Ritz Carlton for dogs. I really do. And as the mayor notes, I only accept the best places for daycare for my babies. His mother was my longtime childcare provider. His, his places are just absolutely immaculate. As far as barking is concerned, when we take our dog out there, the only barking I ever hear is a little greeting of the new dog that's showing up. And as soon as the dog's there, and it, because the barking almost ceases immediately. So it's not a problem. I mean, the barking in my neighborhood is worse than out in his Alps Retreat. And to be honest with you, my wife taught Scott, and I've dealt with him, and I'm aware of all of his projects that he has going on. He does nothing but the best. And this will be a tremendous asset to the area. And I commend you for what you did with the dog park. That's one of the best, I'm a lifelong resident of Seward, and that's one of the best things that's come along in Seward. And I don't think it's caused any problems at all in that area. And I would just wholeheartedly support this project and approval of this special use permit.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Please step forward. Welcome, Pat.
Good evening. Pat Stanley, 1107 Rainbow Avenue. I too am a longtime customer of Scott Dinsloggi's. I take my dogs out there. I'm here in support of this as a business, not only for him, but as a business. I said last night, I have to take my dog to Lincoln to be groomed. There's nowhere in town to have that done. I don't want to go to Lincoln. I don't like to go to Lincoln to do this. I'd rather keep my business in Seward. And one of the things that Scott's gonna do is that grooming out there. And the other thing is, like, doggy daycare, he spoke about. And it's come up a number, number of times to people that this is something that people need. I had an elderly lady talk to me. She went to the doctor and ended up getting put in the hospital. She had nowhere for her dog to go. And she was only gonna be in the hospital for a day or two. But this is something, you know, and there's people that have appointments in Lincoln and now appointments in Omaha and things. And you need somewhere to take your dog for a day. But as a business, I just, I just support it as a business. I really do. And Scott does a great, great job taking care of it. I'm pretty particular how hilarious, but he takes care of our fur babies. And he does a great job. So, I thank you, and I hope you consider this.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Welcome, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor. Jonathan Jenk with the Seward County Chamber Development Partnership. I just want to comment real briefly to reiterate some of the comments that I made at Planning Commission, actually, a month or so ago when they met and first considered the setbacks on this project. I just want to make note, we are kind of data nerds in our office, and so copied off some retail marketplace potential and retail goods and services expenditures within the community. I did a five, 10, and 15-mile radius of East Highway 34. I did it based on actually the former Plains Equipment Group because that's a building that we used to obviously try to fill, where that was recently filled. And it shows a considerable need both for pets or households that own any pets, specifically households that own dogs. It shows that there's an above-market potential index for retail services to that market, both in the 5, 10, and 15-mile radius, as well as in the 5, 10, 15-mile radius of retail goods and services expenditures on pets that were well above average within the area. So I thought I would show this to you to show that there is a strong need for pet care services, specifically with dogs in the area. So appreciate your consideration of this important project.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments on this item? Yes.
Question for Scott.
Yes, Scott, can you come up to the podium, please?
You mentioned that you had obtained agreement from all the neighbors. Address the issue with Mr. Sheehan. Is that resolved?
I have. We are currently working with our attorneys to write up an agreement between us both. Mr. Sheehan is worried about his property value decreasing with his kennel so close to his house. So, we have sat down with our attorneys and are currently drafting an agreement between the both of us that we are, we are positive that we are gonna come to an agreement and resolve that issue just between the both of us.
So this project doesn't go forward unless you have the agreement?
Correct. So he wants to have that agreement signed with me in order to, for him to sign the amendments to the protective covenant. So once again, I'm confident that we will come to an agreement. We have sat down, like I said, with our attorneys, and we have both left the meeting with a lot of hope that we can come to an agreement.
And just keep in mind, too, that this would agree, the vote tonight is, is if you were to go on with the planning commission's recommendation, there are contingencies in that. And so those all have to be met before this would go into effect. Yes, Ed?
I was just gonna mention that at the meeting last night, if I remember right, the special use permit is contingent upon the amendment being signed.
Correct. Yeah, correct. Okay. Like I said, I have full confidence that all the neighbors will sign that amendment. I continue to listen to their needs. They continue to call me and bring up additional things. And I am always very reasonable in listening to those concerns and know that we're all gonna feel really comfortable, you know, with this amendment once we all sign.
And it's also important, I think, too, that we're not viewed as holding something up, that we go forward with this and it's on, on Scott to get those agreements and to meet all those contingencies, and it's on his timetable, and we can't get blamed for him not getting open sooner than later. So, any other questions or comments?
Move to approve the special use permit with the contingency set by planning commission, which helps me remember where the protective covenant amendment limited to 20 kennels and Scott's controlling ownership. Scott, as long as Scott remains ownership.
I'll second.
Motion and second, ready for the discussion. Seeing not be registered to your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Thank you, Scott. Item number one under administrative items, consideration of a request by Maverick Group LLC, DBA Park 15 Lounge, for a special designated liquor license for an event at Lula Bell Boutique, 341 North Sixth Street on November 14, 2019. Wanting to be in that?
This is their first event, and so it has to be considered, council, if there were any concerns.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Vote to approve.
The motion and second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Item two, a consideration of an interlocal agreement with Seward County for the Waverly Road Improvements Project and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Jake.
Good evening. You can see in the agreement, this is an interlocal with the Seward County. This allows us to bid the Waverly Road project as one entire project from our portion, which is Highway 15, to the Plum Creek Bridge, and along with the county's portion, which is the bridge all the way to County Road 252. So, as you can see, the stipulations allow us to, we become basically the owner in the contracts for the construction. The county will pay all of their own portion of the project. They will pay us a small portion for our administration of the, of the project, as well as construction observation. All testing and surveying are split separately and bid as items in the plans and specs.
And I hope this makes this project a little bit more efficient by doing it together rather than separate, but also they'll be done roughly the same time. It's part of one project as opposed to one being finished possibly later than the other. So, I'm trying to not disrupt the people that are living on there any more than necessary. Yeah, any questions or comments on item number two?
To approve the agreement?
Second.
The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Item three, consideration of for approval of final plans and specifications for the Waverly Road project and authorize the city to advertise for bids. Jake.
Okay, so again, this project includes our portion and the county's. We bid as one project. So the plan set includes our plans, which were done by Shimmer, their plans, which were done by Kirkland Michael. Their section is obviously different than ours. Just ditches, and ours is, you know, two through lane, one middle turn lane, and storm sewer. So, I can answer any specific questions, but we're opening it up to basically completion of the project in December of 2021. That will still allow us to be ahead of the trail based on trail's pace currently. And that also allows more flexibility for contractors on when they can get the project done, when they can start the project. I'm estimating it's gonna be seven to eight months of construction. As far as the phasing goes, I've got several different phases, but the gist of it is the section between Columbia and Carroll K. Those intersections have to be accessible at all times. And that section between those two streets must be done in the summer. And I've coordinated with the school district. They're okay with that phasing. That allows them to get in and out of their north access during the school year. It's also not too much of a stretch to get that much work done in one, three months, summer, basically 98 days, so.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions?
That'll be curving gutter between, up to that corner, is that right?
Yeah, so Highway 15 to Carroll K will be curving gutter.
Okay.
And then everything east of that will be ditches.
And is it still blacktop or paved?
It'll be concrete paved.
And there's no trail work being done at this time, right?
Nope, just, just the grading for the trail on the south side.
Any questions or comments? Motion. Move to approve the final plans. The motion and a second, please register.
Yeah, second.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Travis Coleman, and Singleton, Schmidt, and Hendricks.
Okay, item four, consideration of an ordinance approving the final plat, Twin Oaks Development Seventh Edition. Greg?
Yes. We previously approved the preliminary plat. There are no specific changes from the preliminary plat that the city council approved ultimately in this one. Planning and zoning met last night, did approve this unanimously. The one thing that they had not seen that you had made a change was that water, wastewater superintendent Tim Richdig between those two prior meetings had the ability to go back in and recalculate and take a look at, I believe it is Walnut and, what's the other one there, Jake?
Spruce.
Spruce. And instead of having a loop that would have tracked the backside there, the west side of Lot 1 with the water system and the water line, Tim recommended, based on the use that Roger provided to us, so we understand what the usage on the lot is gonna be, we're just gonna stub those out with fire hydrants and valves, and then we'll wait for further development because there is interest in developing this further west of this to align the net, the loop with the actual right-of-way that would be dedicated because there is room back there to put in another full-size roadway. Subdivision improvement agreement notes that when the city goes through the first Pine Street to hard-surface curving gutter, that Walnut and Spruce will also need to be improved. Subdivider and the property purchasers agreed to that. And so when we make those improvements, these roads will be upgraded as well. I can answer any questions you have. Outlet B is platted as a stormwater runoff area. It will later be absorbed when this is further developed. And then, as you know, there's a waterway that's not shown on here, but essentially runs all the way through this Outlet A, right through this section, very large waterway that ends up in a pond that goes into the creek to the north across Cottonwood. Outlet B will likely be absorbed into that into a larger stormwater plan as this area continues to develop. But for right now, so we don't improve runoff, or have any runoff issues, that's what Outlet B will be utilized for.
Any questions or comments on item four?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Aye. An ordinance to approve the plat in Pato, Twin Oaks Development Seventh Edition to the city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, that's here and after set forth located north end of Augusta Drive to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. Provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. Is that right? The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2019-29, and the title is hereby approved. I think the motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Agreed.
Second. The motion and a second. Need for discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. This is ordinance number 2019-29. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
No move.
Okay.
The motion and a second, need for the discussion? Seeing none, a question issued. Ordinance number 2019-29 be finally passed and adopted, to register your vote. Please display the votes. Okay, so for A, the consideration for approval of final subdivision agreement. Is there anything to add to that?
No, I think we kind of covered it. And what the responsibilities that the developer are in the subdivision improvement agreement, so.
Any questions, otherwise is there a motion?
Agreed.
The motion, wait, and second, correct? The motion and second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you. Item five, consideration of a second. Yeah, thank you, Roger. Consideration of a second amendment to the tower and ground space lease agreement with USC OC, Nebraska, Kansas LLC, US Cellular for replacement of equipment on the water tower at 223 North Seventh Street. Greg?
Yep, just a equipment, some of it's a replacement, some of it is some adjustment in addition to the ground space elements that US Cellular is using on the downtown water tower. Both Tim Richdig and Ed Gonzalez both reviewed the plans and specs on this, and I think Kelly also saw this one. And so, no issues or concerns with it at this point. So, we keep reminding them and letting them know that the city is under consideration for our long-term outlook for the downtown tower to just be prepared for that so they can work with us and if they need to do any testing or preparations in advance of that, once we get further down the line and you guys make more decisions on whether, what you want to do, we've been briefing them on that as well. I can answer any questions?
Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is I not the one?
The motion and a second. Motion to lead the vote.
Implying.
Please register your votes, please display the votes. Item six, consideration of a statement on works agreement with G-Works for Simple City Physical Asset Management Cloud Application Subscription Renewal.
Basically, in a nutshell, that's our GIS. But GIS Workshop is now formed into G-Works. They've bought out Summit, which is the accounting software and some of the billing elements that we use. And so they continue to expand their empire, we'll say. And so essentially what this is, is just our GIS portion of our programming, and then also the Simple City program that comes with it. We're trying to work with some of our new hires, and when we talk about the new code enforcement person and also the new building inspector, zoning administrator, we'll continue to work on tagging things through Simple City to use that. Once we also, the other thing is, we can't integrate right now because of our, we're finishing up our fund accounting over the year. So we convert over to fund accounting. And once we do that, then we can integrate Summit into basically GIS. Those two, based on the accounting system we have right now, multi-interface until we change that over. So, we're working with them, and then we will get a lot more bells and whistles at our fingertips. But we want to make sure everybody's trained up and knows what they're doing. But this keeps us on the exact same level, the same GIS for the next year. No changes from our prior year.
So is there, I mean, I don't know all the bells and whistles you want to add to this, but there is, is there an intent at some point to do more than an annual renewal in the hopes of a discount or a longer term?
Yes, the one that we, we had one that was for consideration, but the jump was from like $7,000 to $24,000. And I was like, yeah, yeah, we're not ready for all those bells and whistles because we can't even utilize them yet. And so, and sitting there talking through them and then working with staff, I said, we need to roll this out over time and make sure that we can actually utilize these things and we don't sign up for everything under the sun. Because they've just rolled out a whole new system. They're also working on record digitalization. They're working on agenda management systems. They're trying to kind of swoop in now and convert GIS Workshop into capturing everything, similar to what you saw with some of like the Bee Hides and things like that. They're just trying to gather the market altogether, which is fine as long as my, our, we're comfortable with the rates we're paying and our staff is comfortable with utilization of the programming itself. The biggest one for us is GIS. We've really, we spent a lot of money to update our GIS and get all that stuff implemented in there. So we want to continue to utilize the system we have now. I think it works well, especially for bell and stormwater. Electric uses it all the time and is constantly adding data to it. Water wastewater is also, so.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Move to per being read.
Aye. Motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display. Spoiled, yeah. I didn't vote. Too quick. Go ahead. Thank you. Item seven, this is another ordinance, consideration of an ordinance declaring a portion of city right-of-way of Park Avenue between 11th Street and 12th Street of Hyatt and Edition, final plat as. between Eleventh Street and Twelfth Street of High End Edition, final plat as alley, Jake.
Alright, um, so this is, uh, as you can kinda see, what's that, just off Hillcrest between eleven and twelve. Uh, we've got Park Avenue, uh, down there, that's basically acts as a turnaround, uh, that area is just kind of a, you know. And it was, when it was platted, I don't know if it was intended to be this narrow, uh, because it was platted as a thirty-foot right-of-way. So I don't know if there was intention to be another thirty-foot right-of-way on the other side of it. Uh, but essentially, we have thirty feet to work with, and we wanna improve, uh, that street, um, we can call it that. Uh, but we can't, uh, meet current standards with only, uh, a thirty-foot right-of-way. There's just not enough room to do what we need to do. So declaring it an alley, which is more accurate, the way it functions, uh, and then also allows us to get it paved, um, with meaning. I don't think anyone addresses off Park Avenue, so that won't be a problem.
I was just curious if you had any feedback from neighbors at all, or any, anything that come up in your conversations when you've been down there?
Uh, I don't, I haven't talked to anybody about declaring it an alley myself. I haven't heard anything, but I think, uh, everyone would appreciate us paving it.
I'm sure they would.
This is an ordinance, uh, it's not a public hearing, but just based on that question, does anyone here from the public wanna comment on this? I don't, we don't typically do it when it's not a public hearing, but just in case that's why you're here, because I can't legally ask you why you're here. If not, that's no problem. Uh, any other questions or comments, otherwise, I need someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, an ordinance to declare a portion of city right-of-way of Park Avenue between the Eleventh Street and Twelfth Street of High End Edition, final plat as alley, as here and after set forth to provide the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with statutory rule?
Move.
Second, motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, to register your votes, please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Move.
Second.
The motion in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, a question issue, ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty be finally passed and adopted, please register your votes, please display the votes. This is the last ordinance for the Union Twenty-One Final Motion to make the ordinance as a part of the permanent record.
Move.
Second, motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Alright, item number eight, consideration for approval of updated job descriptions, correct?
Yes, um, probably we'll take not all of these in turn, we'll probably start off with A, and then we'll gather B through G all together, and we'll kinda explain what's for the, uh, with the resignation of our most recent community service officer, uh, in, in preparation of putting that out, uh, for advertisement, uh, the mayor tasked city administration, also the police department, with reviewing that job description. Uh, we also set certain expectations and kinda talked throughout, uh, a few different departments about the responsibilities of that. And I think the biggest one that came out of that discussion, uh, was the code enforcement elements of the job. As you may remember, uh, code enforcement technically is housed over here in the building inspections office. Ed was covering a lot of that, and over time, we had moved a lot more over to the community service officer to try and take care of weeds, junk vehicles, um, trash out in yards, and some odds and ends that fall basically under nuisance codes. Um, that had been going on, but one of the hard parts was, is the community service officers under the direct authority and control and supervision of the police department and their command staff over there, but this person is doing work for a whole different office and reporting back to a different office, and, and it, it really just became kind of a, an issue for us in regards to who's in charge of it, if they're not performing to the level that we want, how do we deal with that? Is it something Ed needs to deal with, is it kinda just a floating thing? And so in those discussions, we felt it was appropriate that all of those elements of the nuisance code enforcement moved directly over to this position, and that's kinda how our expectation is in the definition, how we redefine this. And then is under the entire supervision of the police department and the command staff over there. Uh, code enforcement ultimately ends up being almost similar to parking enforcement and everything else. If you don't follow through with us asking you to mow your lawn, or to do one of those other things, uh, as we've talked here, and we've talked about prosecuting some of these, ends up with a ticket and then ultimately prosecution. That's probably better housed in the police department, and the, their mechanisms and how they pass those along to ultimately the county attorney for us. And so, we talked that over, uh, amongst the mayor, myself, uh, Chief Baldwin, and Assistant Chief Peters, and we all felt that that was the appropriate thing to do, that gives Alan and his crew authority over this, and then they can set realistic goals and expectations for what we wanna see out of code enforcement moving into the future without kinda having this float where no one really knew what may or may not have been going on. Are you keeping track of it, am I keeping track of it? Uh, it will all entirely be housed under the police department and within theirs, uh, and that'll be the expectation of the next person that takes the job, should you approve the job description.
And this is the ideal time to review those job descriptions, because obviously, we would need to put out, um, an advertisement for the position, and wanna make sure that, you know, for things that can be done differently, or whether, you know, a position needs to be tweaked, or do we need a position, all those considerations are made at this time, uh, because it's a lot easier than to bring in someone new under, under those parameters than try and, and make adjustments, you know, with, with existing employees. So that's, we're another reason why we use these opportunities as, as a, a way to, uh, address and, and tweak those job descriptions. And this is item eight A that we're talking about right now, any questions or comments on that?
I'll just note two other quick things, another responsibility is animal control, that's a primary responsibility. Another one is parking enforcement, and then lastly, uh, assistant with traffic control and things like that, funeral escorts. Uh, those are some of the other major responsibilities. I did get a query from a council member this afternoon, and so I just relayed this information. They asked what other first-class cities that we compared to have a similar community service officer, and that to me means they're called a code enforcement officer, community service officer, or animal control officer, one of those three. Crete, York, Skyler, Beatrice, Plattsmith, and Blair all have one of those, if not multiple ones, but at least one of those within theirs that we use for comparability, because their primary work is very similar to this position, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Would this person be, I mean, they're not going through the police academy, all these things, so they're not an officer in the sense that they're in, are they in uniform, or?
They do, we do provide them, they use a uniform, and part of that is because you're sitting there handling animals and things like that. They will go around, the vehicle that they'll predominantly use is the, uh, kinda the purplish, bluish, uh, Colorado that we have. We can load things up into the back, and we can put animal kennels and things like that in it. And so usually, our prior community service officer had one that said, you know, kind of a uniform, you know, a polo shirt. Uh, obviously, they won't have a weapon.
Right, okay.
They won't have some of those things, because they're not trained in any of that stuff, and they're not a, uh, civil service police officer. But they will have a uniform, they, they do operate in a marked vehicle, but it is, we don't try to give off the impression, I think it just says city of Seward, correct Alan?
That's correct.
It does not say police on it, so we don't want people running up to it, you know, thinking, we would provide any assistance we could.
They'll still help.
Yes, well. We're not trying to hold, we're not trying to hold the person out as an officer, police officer.
No, I just wanted to kind of understand this, I, I figured that, I just wanted to understand the distinction, but thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion for item eight A?
Move to per the job description.
Motion in a second, assistant. Please register your votes, please display the votes. Public properties director.
We're gonna group B through G together, we can answer any specific questions. Uh, what this is, is as you approve the budget, we add an additional position to the public properties, parks and rec department, uh, kind of a labor position, I think it will fall under, uh, public properties maintenance worker. Previously, those were public property caretakers in one and two. In doing that, we said, well, this is the time, we're gonna go advertise, we wanna make sure we advertise for a position that meets the realistic expectations of the job that they're performing. So we said, well, let's go take a look at, once we got in there, we went, we have to kinda take a look at all of them to make sure they're correct, and once we got going, we just said, everything in Bob's purview, Bob Core, that in that, that he oversees of there, let's just take a look at. There's also some things in there that Bonnie, she's just been rolling through all the departments, has some boilerplate we wanna see in there, in the ways that we organize, and also not multiple lists, something as a, uh, you know, a major element of the job, and then it's also a secondary element, so just clean up. And so, we can go through and answer any of those questions, that's essentially what we were doing here. The biggest one though is the public property maintenance worker is a conversion of the public properties caretaker one and two. We used to have two positions there, we found almost no difference between the two job descriptions that date back years and years and years ago. And we also could not find a discernible reason or policy, how we promoted from a one to a two. It wasn't like, well, if you worked two years, you get to move up, or you meet this certification, or get this certain trainings, and now you move to a two, or, or we have two twos and the rest of you are all ones until one of the twos leaves. We had no policy, and we said, well, this doesn't really make any sense, and there's no discernible difference, let's just eliminate it. And then what you'll see is, you'll see a new, if you approve this tonight, two weeks from now, you'll see a new pay scale. We'll take the low end of the one, the top end of the two, and we'll spread them out that way, everybody will fall in. Currently, all of ours now are recommended, or are twos, so they'll be on roughly where they're at in their scales now. Nobody's gonna get a huge jump one way or the other, from where they're expected to be. But if we have no discernible reason to have it, why have it at this point, so.
Any questions or comments on any of these B through G job descriptions?
And I'll just add that we, we cleaned up some titles, and all of the employees have seen the new drafted job descriptions according to Mr. Core, he said he went over all of them, of the job descriptions, and they didn't have any concerns. But we tried to clean up some titles, uh, shorten them up, and make them more appropriate.
And unless there's an objection, you'll, you can pull any of these out and do them separately, but we try to do B, C, D, E, F, and G in one motion, unless you wanna pull one out for some reason.
I'll prove, uh, B through G.
Okay, the motion?
Second.
The motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item nine, consideration of a resolution approving stop signs at the intersection of Progressive Avenue and Twin Oaks Road for north and southbound traffic, correct?
Uh, this was a citizen request that ultimately the citizen showed up and kinda gave you a little bit of a hint on this one. Uh, we had a request to take a look at putting stop signs on Progressive Avenue, uh, due to a number of concerns, specifically the intersection with Twin Oaks Road, because out of Mobile Home Park goes directly to the highway. Uh, we had the informal, what I call the traffic committee, uh, consists of Chief Baldwin, uh, Mel Aldrich Street Superintendent, Jake Bosch, a city engineer, and myself. Uh, we reviewed this and a number of other requests that we've had lately in regards to traffic issues, parking issues, road flows and things like that, sidewalks, pedestrian walkways. And after reviewing it and discussing amongst all of us, uh, it was the unanimous recommendation, uh, by the group to go ahead and break up traffic along Progressive. Essentially, right now, you have yield signs from one end to the other, and what we're hearing from people in different issues is people will try to, I don't know what, for what reason, but they do it, they try to drive all the way down Progressive and just kinda zoom through these, because they got a pretty decent line of sight. Again, the hard part is with that, is when they're doing that, or they're stopping at a yield and they're kinda rolling through, they're not looking the hard length back at people coming at fifty-five miles an hour, turning in from behind them. And that was one of the biggest concerns that Alan brought up, and some of the stuff that he had talked about with traffic data and accidents at Twin Oaks specifically. And so we felt to break up that long run of Progressive with just a few yield signs, that this specific location, we would request stop signs to break that up and also slow people down, as this is a direct line in to, uh, the industrial area. It's not an offset, uh, entrance, and so, uh, we can answer any questions you have, but that was a recommendation from us four.
Any questions or comments, yes, Chris.
And the, the stop signs are gonna be placed on Progressive, right?
Yes, they'll stop progressive traffic going north and south.
And, and Mel, when we make a change like this, I know back in the day when, when like Columbia and Hillcrest, where you only had a stop sign on Columbia at one point, then you, then we put stop signs, made it a four-way stop. I know there were like red flags on those stop signs for a while, just so that people who were locals. Weren't expecting the stop sign to be there, um, I, yeah, when we do a change like this, can we put something like at least for a couple weeks or a month, just so that people?
Like six months?
Or forever, just so that makes sure that people are, are, are aware that this is different, and they're, and they get used to that, is that something? Okay, that'd be my, my only suggestion, just so people aren't surprised when we change something on there. Any other key questions or comments, otherwise, uh, someone can intro, here, we need someone to introduce the resolution. You sound so excited.
I would, there was a smile, I'll introduce it.
Right. Resolution has been introduced and it does need that resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-six. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
Motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Alright, so you mentioned report.
Nothing too exciting, continue to work on our PMA items, me and Jake and Mel, uh, have some onsite inspections of some hangover projects that are still going on, farm levy, uh, some of the bridges and, and work down by the trail. Um, other than that, I can answer your questions, yeah?
Any questions on the report, if, that was someone like to make a motion to accept? Motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Do you have any feature requests for a, a council agenda items or administrative action? Yes, Alyssa.
Um, with the whole stop sign thing, can we take a look up on Maple, um, west, east? The new admission, north and south?
Could you maybe point to a map sometime, and then Greg can look it up?
Maple and?
And east Maple, whatever that new past Columbia is.
Are you?
To the east? Hawthorne and?
How, are you doing on Hawthorne and Maple?
Is that Hawthorne, is that?
Look at Jake, Jake's pulling it up right now.
Did you do, didn't you do a traffic study on this, Rachel?
No, it says we've had requests over, over time for something there.
Yeah, because there's a lot of kids that are getting dropped off on Star, is that what it is? And they'll make that circle, and then they'll come up this one, whatever that one is.
Hawthorne.
Hawthorne. And nobody knows what's going on, and there are so many kids in that neighborhood, after school and before school, that it could even just be a yield sign or something, but, or somebody could just take a little stab.
Yield on what?
Um, going north and.
It's the same, it's the same one I've been talking to you about.
Yep.
It's up there by the middle school, it's where they're, it's where the middle school kids are coming one way, and the elementary school kids are coming this way, and they're all in the road, and they're riding their bikes, and then there's the traffic of the pickups, and it's just, it's just a mess, sometimes.
Yeah, they can like it.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other items? Seeing none, um, Jonathan, upcoming events?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, tomorrow we have a partnership with our local schools and manufacturers in Seward County. We'll celebrate and run our annual careers in manufacturing and engineering technologies day, partnership with Southeast Community College in Milford. Uh, this Thursday, October seventeenth, is our business after hours at Route Six. Um, Saturday, October nineteenth, will be Lincoln Premium Poultry's ribbon cutting. Um, just wanna make quick note that, uh, they're really positively impacting multiple farming families in Seward County. Uh, we've constructed new barns, either finished or in the process, over thirty million dollars in new investment in Seward County, and so we wanna support their manufacturing facilities, uh, ribbon cutting in Fremont on Saturday. Um, Friday, October twenty-fifth, Walmart has a grand reopening, starting at nine AM. And their store management has asked for local community leadership to consider attending. Um, if, if you haven't noticed, it's, uh, Walmart's kinda first big renovation in fourteen years. They really put a lot of time and effort and investment back into our local store, and so we wanna support them in that. And that starts at nine AM on Friday, October twenty-fifth. And then two, uh, quick November dates, uh, big days for us, especially in Seward. Shop Small Seward is Saturday, November sixteenth, and then of course, Saturday, November thirtieth, is our ninth annual Seward Christmas Festival. And so please mark those on your calendars, thanks, Mayor. And so please mark those on calendars. Thanks, Mayor.
And if you got the Walmart Brings breadcrumbs, so that you can find your way through, since everything is not where it used to be. In the grocery at least, especially in the grocery.
Have a lot of great associates that'll help you find it.
Could be twenty minutes to find a bread, I'm just saying.
You will get young yet.
Alright.
Started on that.
Next we have strategy session, is we, do we have a motion?
Uh, I'm in with the city council, go into closed session with the mayor and city administrator, SECVP CEO Jonathan Jank, and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area, real estate interests, and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed thirty minutes.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
Can we add the city engineer to that?
Yeah, of course. I'm sorry. Very friendly amendment. It isn't on here.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes. The council has voted to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area, real estate interests, and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for attending.